Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 27. If you are watching live Monday, February 27, and would like to call in with comments or questions, we invite you to do so at 769-1677. As always, you can catch us on FiOS or Optum Cable TV, and also on live webcasting as well as on-demand webcasting after the fact at PCTV76.org. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session on Monday, March 5 at 7:00 PM, and our next regular meeting is Monday, March 12 at 8:00 with a work session at 7:00, again all here at Village Hall. So, we have a few things to report on the week, but we have a good audience tonight, and I think virtually everybody is here for a matter that a lot of you were here for last weekend, and we've heard quite a bit over the last couple of weeks, which is this proposed project that the New York State Department of Transportation has hatched that would involve a series of seven very tall towers, about 120 feet, in the section of the Sawmill from the intersection of the Sawmill and the Teconic up to the Reader's Digest Building. There would be two in the town of Mount Pleasant, two in the Village of Pleasantville, and three in the town of Newcastle. So, any of you who are interested in a lot of background on that subject, we spent a lot of time on it at our last meeting two weeks ago, and that webcast is available to you whenever you might want to watch it at PCTV76.org. You can click into that and watch it at your leisure, so anybody who is interested in all the details about what DOT is providing or proposing to provide, we went through that in quite a bit of detail a couple of weeks ago, and so to avoid plowing that ground again, we won't do it again tonight, and we'll focus on what's happened since. A very active citizens group has been working, and impressively so, with lots of stuff going on, lots of contact being made at DOT Region 8, and also at DOT in Albany as well as other offices. And there was a citizens' meeting that was held yesterday, Sunday, up at the Methodist Church, which was also well-attended, and was also attended by our state senator, Andrew Stewart-Cousins, and by Tom Abanati, our Assemblyman. And all of us spoke in, at one point or another, in the course of that meeting, and the message I certainly delivered, and which I deliver again tonight, is that this board is unanimously opposed to this project. The Town Council in the town of Mount Pleasant is unanimously opposed to this project, and the Town Council in the town of Newcastle is unanimously opposed to this project. So, you have the solid and unswerving support of all three boards for those various communities, and Tom Abanati has been active and vigorous in the same goal. State Senator Stewart-Cousins sent a letter last Friday to DOT Region 8 and copied that to the governor, expressing her concerns about the project. And again, I won't go through all the details about what the project is, but for those who may be new to the details, the short version of a very long story is that it is a project that would provide a network of cameras to watch traffic along the Sawmill Parkway, as well as three other parkways in Westchester County. And on the Sawmill Parkway up to the point of the Teconic, they're building a fiber-optic spine that will carry the data back to the home base, and as a result of that, the towers are about 40 feet high. They're that height simply to provide the view to the road. When they get to the intersection with the Teconic, for some geographic reasons, but mostly cost reasons, they propose not to build the fiber-optic spine, and instead to build a microwave transmission system that requires towers that are about 120 feet high. That is because the microwave transmission requires line of sight above trees, above buildings, to beam its message from one tower to the next. So, the position we've taken, and I think the position all of you who've been involved in it have taken, is that first off, there was nothing approaching any kind of reasonable notice of what might be happening here, and secondly, that there really are only two acceptable solutions to this, and one is, if you feel you need this project, DOT, build the fiber-optic spine same way as you're building it elsewhere, so that you can put up the much smaller towers, and alternatively, face the reality that in fact, the problem we have in this neck of the woods with that road is flooding. It's not a circumstance where it makes an awful lot of sense to spend a lot of our taxpayers' dollars on an eye-in-the-sky project to watch what we already know, which is that when it rains, the traffic stops. So, speaking personally, and I think I commented to this effect yesterday, I'm sure that there are places elsewhere in the region where there are serious traffic management issues. I get it, that managing traffic across the White Stone Bridge is a complicated venture, and perhaps high-tech is a piece of the future of all of that. Certainly not my place to be determining what regional strategies are appropriate for traffic management, but we live here, we're not going to have our community damaged and our neighborhoods damaged by huge unsightly towers, and by the potential for invasion of privacy, the issue of microwave, whatever the issues may be, it just feels like, from the standpoint of the average citizen, an insane project. So, happy to have anybody comment about that, and as I mentioned, our Assemblyman in this district, Tom Abanati, has been extremely active in this venture, and I thank him for that. We happen also tonight to be in the company of Bob Castelli, who is the Assemblyman for the district immediately north of us, which includes North Castle, Newcastle, I'm sorry, and given his presence, I'd invite him to comment a little bit, especially about a new piece of legislation that is kicking around in Albany with the support of all of our local officials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Board of Trustees. Ladies and gentlemen, I came here because I heard about this meeting tonight, and since I will not be at our meeting in Chappaqua, which will be tomorrow night because I will be in Albany, I wanted to stop by here and just see what the progress is going on. I also wanted to make you aware of the fact that Assemblyman Pretlow, one of my friends and colleagues, along with Assemblyman Abanati, who would have been here tonight, but in his absence, I will speak for him, along with Assemblyman Katz and Assemblywoman Amy Paulin, have put in a bill, Assembly Bill A2496, A2496, with a Senate companion of 2429, which was proposed by Senator Oppenheimer. And basically, what the bill does is, it forbids the placement of towers for communication or other purposes that would be elected along special highways within Westchester County without the consent of local government, and without first holding a public hearing. As you know, none of the local governments consented to this, there were no public hearings. I came to find out about this much later in the process, and along with my colleagues, decided to act to interdict this as much as we could. Those bills are pending, they are pending in both houses we speak. We'll be back up in Albany tomorrow, and I can get you some more information on how quickly it might be determined. But in the interim, obviously, many of us have made overtures to the Department of Transportation, Joan McDonald, who is the Commissioner there, and the Governor's Office, asking him to show cause why this takes place, and to give us some reasonable public hearings, so as to allow the public comment to take place before anyone makes a determination about that, and also to ensure the fact that our local governments have the opportunity to be heard in this matter, whether positively or negatively, before any determination is made. We are waiting an answer on that, a response at this juncture, so that is where we are as of today, but I did want to brief you on that in Tom Abanati's absence tonight, so...
Thank you very much, Bob, that's great. I really appreciate your coming by to report that, and also appreciate the effort you're making on our behalf and on behalf of your constituents in Newcastle.
My pleasure, and I am joined by Assemblyman Steve Katz, I should also tell you, so...
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I wasn't glad to answer them, if not...
You think there is a reasonable chance that this bill might pass in a timely manner?
I think so, you know, it's basically, we are, as a group of individuals representing Westchester, all in favor of home rule, as a result of which, this is a plan which may have some onerous consequences, but it flies in the face of good government and transparency. The fact of the matter is, this is something that was done without any of our knowledge, without any of your approval, and that's simply not the way good government should operate. So, I do believe it can be taken up quickly, and I believe my colleagues, who are on both sides of the aisle, this is a bipartisan bill, have the ability to move this thing forward in a timely fashion. I'm still awaiting a response from DOT to determine exactly what it is they're cooking up.
Welcome to the club.
Does this bill have to, does it go through committee?
Yes, the bills will go through a committee, and then be released to the floor calendar.
So, what committee is it going through?
Transportation, and it can go to codes, depending upon what the requirements are for putting the thing up, but by and large, transportation.
What's it targeted at, transportation, it could possibly go to?
It could, it could, you know, Albany is a strange thing, and things operate by our circuitous route. Eventually, hopefully, they see the light of day, but let me say this to you, if it's fast-tracked, it could conceivably come up on a committee agenda this week, be voted on, and hit the floor next Monday.
Is this something that will definitely apply to this particular project, or because what's been done so far is somewhat locked in with grants and with physical planning for the location, would that preclude these kinds of hearings being effectively applied to this project?
I don't believe it would, because under the circumstances, if this particular legislation takes effect, and the verbiage in the legislation indicates that it takes effect immediately, so upon taking effect, obviously, it goes to the governor for his signature, but regardless of what DOT may or may not have done thus far, even if it's a shovel-ready project, since the shovel is not in the ground yet, the ability to stop it based upon this legislation certainly still exists.
So, do we know that no contracts have been signed for the actual construction?
No, contracts have been signed. The project has been let, and some preliminary work has been done on the various sites. The towers themselves, we are informed by DOT, have not been signed off on in the design phase, still in shop drawings, whatever. So, as a result, what DOT has told us is, they're included in a contract that has been let, the contractor is, I think, a little behind schedule, there is some design issue that they're working through, that means the drawings for the towers haven't been approved, and therefore, they haven't been bought yet. Nobody has shared with us whether there's an economic impact attached to reducing the scope of the existing contract, that is, a kill fee or something of that kind, I have no idea.
Sure. Well, as you know, I was intimately involved in the construction of our 120 bridge in Chappaqua, and as you know, that went on infinitum, on nauseam, and was started and stopped and started and stopped a couple of times, so my belief, to the best of my knowledge, is, we do have the ability to interdict at this juncture.
Right.
And if in fact, we are successful in passage of the bill, then what it would do is absolutely require them to hold a requisite public hearing, as well as seek the approval of all of the individual jurisdictions involved. So, that is our aim, that is what we're hoping to do, and once we get up there tomorrow and get a little bit more information, you know, a little closer to the vest there, we'll be able to report back to you, hopefully, by the end of the week where we stand.
Well, that's great, I appreciate that, and I can't help but imagine that it would be useful in our lobbying efforts with DOT in general, to get the sense that the legislature is upset about this in general, perhaps even in regions beyond the ones that are most immediately affected, so I assume that this is an issue for the communities who are also targeted for the tall towers.
Absolutely, sir.
I think there's some questions from, no?
Yeah, got to it.
Okay.
Could I ask one additional question?
If they could raise it as a defense, it's an ex post facto law, clearly, because they're going to say this thing started in 2007, and this law is whatever, 2012.
Yeah. Okay, so whatever, could you, the question was whether, in the end, legislation now could possibly capture the current project as legislation passed after the fact, so...
I think the answer is yes. The gentleman had asked whether or not this would be created as an ex post facto law, meaning a law that makes something that previously occurred before the law illegal. The fact of the matter is, we are not looking to make an action previous to this action, the erection of the tower is illegal, we are interested in perhaps stalling and/or stopping the erection of the tower, or modifying the project to the belief and desires of all of the jurisdictions involved. So, while the previous actions would become an ex post facto law, what we can do is interdict in what is happening moving forward from this day on.
Right.
That answers your questions.
All right. Thank you, Senator Lehman, we appreciate your coming by and appreciate your efforts.
And myself or Assemblyman Abanati will report back to you when we have a little bit more information.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Let me also, let me also report that, as I have told many of you, I met with DOT along with Joan Mayberry from the town of Mount Pleasant, and Penny Paderuski, the Administrator for Newcastle, on behalf of Susan Carpenter, and Patty Dwyer, with me from Pleasantville. We met with DOT a week ago Friday, made very clear our concerns and our position on this, that was echoed by all three communities unanimously, and we were promised at that time that we would get some sort of a timeline, at least for the decision-making process, so that we would have an idea, if I can quote the DOT External Affairs Woman, she was hopeful that we would be able to manage expectations. So, in an effort to manage expectations, I sent her an email today and said, okay, a week and a day has passed, and still no timeline, and received a response promptly that they still don't have a timeline, and they'll let us know as soon as they do, so there you have it. No substantive word from DOT since we last met, no change in the status quo, but they have assured all three communities, as I mentioned the last time, that the towers themselves have not been approved finally in the design phase, and they have not been built, purchased, so that opportunity, I assume, to cancel them still remains intact. And I will also say, I'm not inclined much to defend DOT in any of this, but I will say that, you know, certainly in some of the conversations we've had with various parts of DOT, we've gotten a respectful and thoughtful hearing, and, you know, there have been some indications that there is some movement in their thinking, so that remains to be seen what the result is, and I just want to thank all of you for your interest and concern for your community and for your neighborhoods. Clearly, this is a circumstance where the public's voice has been heard and heard loudly, they have inquired to us as to whether there's a way to quiet that down, and gosh, I don't know. Really? So, if anybody has any comments or questions, I invite you to come now to the podium, you need to come up here so that it can be heard on television, and again, I think we probably don't need to rehash all the details, but happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not going to rehash any issues, but I just...
You have to say who you are, I'm sorry, and where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry, James Cagiano, 89 Saws Lane, Pleasantville.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Just basically, I think this is the professional way that everybody's conducting, both the, our elected officials here, and all the elected officials from the other towns, and that's a great thing. One thing I just, a remote problem I have is that, pointed out in a lot of research, that a lot of the people in the citizens' group have been doing, especially doing, it came to fruition in '07 when they proposed this project, and you were at the meeting yesterday at the church on this, what bothered me is to get in writing what they proposed to the towns in '07, it was deception. What they proposed, again, was basically, they said that from the Hawthorne North, they were providing a wireless backbone system. That's it. Wireless backbone system with photos of typical project with telephone pole-type poles to mount the cameras. That was it. So, the mayor, I don't know if it was Mayor Gordon at the time, whatever he got, that letter, that's all it was, wireless backbone system, which now has come to fruition, are these mega-towers as we know it, and that's what bothers me. So, I know as a last resort is that hopefully, through this professional manner and the procedures you are carrying, that we go that forth, but keep in mind, if we have to go to any kind of litigation, that we have the backing of our fellow town to support our legal action. If it has to go that direction, I really hope it doesn't, but that's always one way to do it, because I think any good lawyer could read that document of '07 and say, this is not even close to what you depicted for this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else want to add anything, Erdwin?
Hi, my name is Erdwin Chua, I live on 100 Pleasant Avenue, Pleasantville. I want to thank the board and the three communities for backing our effort here, but I would like to make sure everybody understands, this issue doesn't just affect the people who will be affected directly by the towers being where we live, but rather, everybody in the community. Now, why so? Because if these towers go up, it would affect the value of the homes of those who live nearby, and the people will be grieving for their taxes to be lowered, and in effect, when that happens, everybody else in the community will have their taxes go up. So, everybody has a stake in this. This is why we all need to be in this. Now, my understanding is that they'll be making the decision very soon, and I believe, from the information that I have, the people who effectively will be making the decision will be the New York State DOT Region 8 Director, and that's William Gordon, and his higher-up, and that would be Joan McDonald. And of course, the governor would have a say in this. We'd like to have everybody make the effort of calling them, because I think that's the only way they could hear us. We already have the politicians and everybody supporting us, but we all have to speak out. By calling them, let them hear what we want. All we really want is just to get this thing solved. We don't want to fight anybody, we just want to have those towers taken off, just go fiber up to as far as they can, and issue will be gone in no time at all. And that's what we need to do, basically, that's what we're going to ask everybody to do. So, as I said, it's not just an issue for some of us, it's really everybody. And I understand this will go all the way to Hutch and everybody else, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Erdwin.
Mayor, everybody else?
Eric Jensen, Thornwood.
Now, before you tell me that I'm not in Mount Pleasant...
It's all right, we're all part of the village.
That's all right.
This is one of those issues that shows the ties that bind, so...
I never heard anything about this, and I get the journal reg every day, you know?
They had an article yesterday.
Yes.
Jeez, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
With the mayor's picture.
Looking rather severe.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
Not the best shot of you.
Yeah.
All right, seriously, who's paying for this?
We understand that, and I can vouch for this, about 80% of the money is coming through the feds with the balance from the state. I think the overall project is in the $25 million range. The piece of it that is this seven-tower section north of the Teconic on the Sawmill is in the 2-point-something-million range.
Okay.
So, we are?
Now...
Yes.
Some parts north of the exit, Pleasantville exit, the roadway is six feet thick. They done it, what, two years ago, the next day?
It was longer than two years ago, but not so long ago, yeah.
No more than three?
Yeah, it's probably, I would guess, five, maybe, something like that now?
Jeez, I'll be dead soon.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Okay.
Please, not tonight.
Not today. All right, and it was flooded the next day?
Yeah.
Now, did anybody ever think of putting piles in that one section so we wouldn't have any trouble?
Well, funny you should say that, our conversation with DOT morphed into the issue of flooding, and the, I won't bore you with all the details, but certainly, a number of people have suggested that the solution to the section of the Sawmill between Grant Street and Marble Avenue to the south is, in essence, to build a very low bridge, so that the road is elevated by a foot or so on whatever kinds of pilings wouldn't sink.
Okay.
It is clear that DOT does not have money to do that at the moment, and it is also clear that there is no activity, repeat, no activity going on right now in DOT to solve this problem.
Well, there was a color brochure at the diner, and there was a guy behind me, I don't see him here, but he was ready to come and, you know, cut throats, he was spitting about this thing, and of course, some silly stuff, like the towers will be looking in your house, like, you know, 19, was that George Orwell?
Well, I mean, they aren't big enough to do that, so...
Yeah, well, I walk around nude in my house, so whoever's going to be watching the thing, I don't want to be politically incorrect in my own house.
Fortunately, you gave us your address only as Thornwood, so...
210 Westchester Avenue. So, if you want to come over, or if there's somebody a problem, please come over at night, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Have you shared this with the Town Council?
All right, seriously, they're talking about they can't do it underground. I got bad news for somebody, there's cables underneath the Atlantic Ocean.
Well, in their defense...
And there's no problem.
In their defense, they didn't say that it couldn't be, they said that the, and again, there are some numbers out there that conflict with one another, but the assertion has been made that the microwave tower scheme is substantially cheaper than building the underground fiber-optic network, and so the decision to stop the fiber-optic at the Teconic and continue with the towers thereafter was a cost decision. I asked, as you might imagine, what was different about the cost south of the Teconic versus north, and essentially, I think the answer is, it was a cost-benefit decision, which is to say, the farther north you go, the less severe the traffic problems are, and therefore, you know, in engineer speak, you should spend less per running mile to observe it, so we disagree, so...
All right, one more thing, and I'll let you go.
We have to stay.
The Elite...
You can go.
The Elite in Scarsdale by the gas station, I believe it's Scarsdale, it looks awful, but at least it looks like a tree if you got a half a bag on.
Uh-huh.
The one here in Castleton Avenue looks like somebody threw a javelin. It's pure white, about 75 feet tall, are we going to get...
It's 150 feet tall, actually.
It is?
Yes.
Wow, I need new glasses. Are they going to look like that, just stand out, ridiculous?
I'm sorry to report, it will look a whole lot worse than that.
That's beautiful.
So, the tower you refer to is a private cell tower...
Okay.
On Castleton Street at the back of our DPW property, that is the subject of extended public hearings with our planning commission, that must be 10 or more years ago now, Steve.
Yeah, at least that, that project had an interesting history, it was originally planned for the top of the post office, then I believe for Memorial Plaza, and it was an outside array, as this particular facility is being projected to be. And then, over a lot of negotiation, we got the telecommunications companies to agree to put the arrays on the inside of the pole. So, what you see is a very streamlined and thin pole here in our DPW, or what you could have been seeing is the whole, the whole thing with the outside arrays and that whole kind of ugly picture.
And that's what we're going to have on the Sawmill or something?
That's what they've been proposing for...
What's proposed for the Sawmill is a little bit shorter, 120 feet versus 150, but a pole that's five feet wide at the base, and which has exposed microwave antennas and cameras at the top, as well as a gizmo that allows the camera and the equipment to be lowered to be serviced, so it is a good bit less sleek, and also based on the sighting, particularly the sighting at the corner of Grant Street and the Sawmill Parkway in a, you know, you really couldn't hatch a more exposed location than that, and I want to say, haven't walked it exactly, but I think it may be within 75 feet of the nearest homes in that location. So, there you have it. I mean, as far as private cell towers are concerned, there is federal law that limits a community's capacity to zone them out completely, but what you see on Castleton Street was the result of a fairly serious planning effort. This project does not have that benefit.
Well, it's starting to get like Nazi Germany here in this country, like, papers please. Gould has my house, I saw it, it looks better in pictures. Now they got, when you pay your toll, right, now you're on the highway, I mean, give me a break, you know? You got it in the cars, you got it in the trucks, and you got it in your private cars, because the last five seconds before you crash, it's recorded, and I told the guy to take it out, you can't, the way they wired it, the car won't run. So, I mean, it's starting to get crazy now, you know? What do I have to do? Every week steal two plates from like the Thornwood diner so I can speed or do what I want? And wear a mask?
I can't speak to that, but you certainly are right that there are privacy issues in the modern world, there's no question about that.
Well, when I said that we're going to go in the house, I love it. Come on. All right, now I aggravated your offense. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Looks right in your house. Deana Nelken, 25 Hillside Avenue, I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but if somebody steals the plates off my car, at least I know where he lives. So, anyway, I've got a few questions. The Chappaqua meeting, that's tomorrow night, which I didn't know about, is, does that have on the agenda about DOT?
I spoke to the town supervisor.
Because I know the town of Mount Pleasant meeting for tomorrow doesn't, so I had previously advised people to go to the town of Mount Pleasant, but if you're free, how about we go to Chappaqua?
Yeah, there is potentially this coming up on the thing, or I don't have the agenda myself, but that's what I was told, I'm making up tomorrow evening.
Is there agenda online?
There are agendas online, and also, there's public comments, so even if it's not on the agenda, you can talk about it even if it's not...
Okay, so... Okay, so...
So, at any rate, for those of you who are watching at home, the, I think the meeting tomorrow night and Tuesday is the regular Town Council meeting for the town of Newcastle, and I imagine, certainly, even if it's... And I imagine, certainly, even if it's not on the agenda, it could be a subject of public comment in the public comment time period, but certainly, the government of Newcastle has been extremely forthcoming to me and wholeheartedly in support of it, so. And the same is true of the Town of Mount Pleasant, so.
Doesn't mean you shouldn't go. We told you that last time.
There may be some benefit attached to the rest of the community hearing about it.
Okay.
Although I would imagine that the supervisors are likely to comment on it in some way.
Okay. If you do not have information about this subject, you can go to StopDOT Towers.org. There's a lot of information on there, and there's also a link to, I believe, our Yahoo group as well. I understand that you are working with the government, and also that DOT has a timeline, but we're giving everybody a deadline. If you don't have an answer that's acceptable to us, we're having a rally on March 10th, and that's a Saturday, and we are still working out details on it. We already have a petition of about 800 to 1,000 signatures, and we have a lot of people who are aware of this, and we are working towards making sure that if they don't make a decision, we're going to have a media blitz, and we are going to invite a whole bunch of major news stations. We've already got a lot of congressmen on board. Please put it on your schedule, and hopefully, we'll have an answer before then, but, and if we do, then we'll have a great big party. But otherwise, I really appreciate everything you guys have done on this. And by the way, from my house, about four or five of the towers we can see, so they'll be able to see us in our underwear too, I guess, so. Well, the more concern is I have two young children, and you worry about pedophiles, you know? I really don't need that at all, you know? I don't really care if you see me in my underwear or not. My husband, you probably don't want to see him. You know, but my kids, I really don't need you to see my kids.
Let me just say, I agree that there are privacy issues attached to this. What DOT has reported they have done in other circumstances where there's the theoretical capacity to see into people's homes is the cameras have been built with a privacy screen. That means if they swivel around in that direction, they are blocked. I'm just reporting what DOT has said. I agree there are privacy issues, and honestly, it's not clear to me that they could achieve the views they seek to achieve from towers this high and still block the views into some of people's homes. So I certainly don't ascribe any nefarious intent to DOT or future operators of the system. By the same token, none of us would appreciate having that risk near our homes.
Sure. Now, I know I mentioned this yesterday at the meeting, but I'd just like to reiterate it very quickly again about health issues. DOT seems to think that there aren't any health issues because it's direct line of sight and it's only between the beam, but you look at things, look at our history. You've got 50 years of the tobacco companies telling us that there are no bad health risks, everything's been fine. You didn't have any studies at all saying that there was anything wrong with smoking, and there clearly is. You know, same thing with asbestos, same thing with lead paint. You know, there, these, we already know that there's something wrong with them. We know that it's not direct line of sight, that there is scatter, especially in bad weather, and that's if it's working perfectly. You know, there's plenty of items on the internet that we found where they aren't working in the specs that they're supposed to be working, and we have a serious problem with it on so many different levels. And we really encourage anybody in government to please pressure DOT and anybody who lives in this area to please make the phone calls, check our website, all the contacts are on there, and just, even if you want to copy and paste and send them an email, it'll take two seconds to do, we'll be thrilled with that. So anything you could do, I'd be very happy, and I encourage anyone else to say anything that they have to say. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add to that? I promise you that we will update everybody as soon as we have anything more to say and as soon as we get some sense back from DOT. As I say, we had reason to think we would get a timeline for a decision from them, and that is, by their report today, still in progress, so. But what I can report with certainty, and I imagine Assemblyman Castelli would agree, clearly collectively, we have the attention of a lot of people, both in Region 8 in Poughkeepsie and in Albany, so I just want to thank all of you for your help, and.
Do you have any comment as well?
Feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Name and address, if you would.
May it please the board. Matt Finkelstein, I live at 11 Gramerton Road. I live on the other side of the high school, so I will not be at the foot of these towers. However, my wife and I sought out the village of Pleasantville because it's both a quaint and also a lively village. And we never viewed the Sawmill River Parkway as a liability to the village because it is also, in its own way, beautiful, at least, and it provides good access when it's dry. These monstrous microwave towers are going to turn the Sawmill into a blight on the village. The towers are meant for interstates, not parkways. The idea that DOT, that this plan could just be foisted on us without proper notification or consent, is really surprising to me, and I applaud the efforts of the legislature to try to give the public some voice in this type of process. I take my three-year-old daughter to the farmer's market. Mr. Mayor, I've seen you there many times.
Yes, right. You handed me a recipe that I've become a core item for.
Okay. The chicken?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Come back next time, and you can share it with the public.
Okay, sure, sure. Maybe we have more time.
Samples.
But I would say that the thought that taking my daughter to the village might possibly expose her to increased radiation with either functioning or malfunctioning towers is very troubling to me. It didn't take Fox 5 long to come up with a neuroradiologist in their program to say that, you know, any radiation is harmful. So where it's unnecessary, it really should be stopped. These towers don't provide any benefits that can't be attained through feasible alternatives, and the costs of these alternatives are a fraction of the costs that would be associated with the devastating effect that these towers would have on our village, and risking the health of our residents and others in the most densely populated area, the Sawmill River Parkway. So my question to the board is, at what point and is the board able to construct a resolution that can be used to apply pressure to those that need the pressure applied?
We certainly could consider that. I'm not sure that, certainly, we have made clear our position, and I mean, I suppose a resolution could only add to that, but I'm not sure it's necessary to have a resolution, although it's worth, it's a suggestion worth considering.
Well, we are considering a moratorium on any cell towers, and that would be put forth with a public hearing and.
Right, we have on our agenda tonight, and I don't want to confuse the issue.
It's different, yeah.
When this matter arose, it, and there has also been some rumor, though no action, of the possibility of a proposed second private cell tower in the village of Pleasantville. So when, with those various items viewed in context, what we have on our agenda tonight on Resolution Number 35 is an authorization to notice a public hearing for a.
Moratorium.
A moratorium on telecommunications facilities. That would be private cell towers. It's not aimed at the DOT thing, which isn't a private cell tower and which we don't get to legislate against anyway, but the issue that arose for us was the cell tower zoning that we have in place was the zoning that was understood 10 years ago as the most restrictive zoning that we were legally entitled to have, and we just want to revisit that, especially revisit the question of positioning and possibly separation, as there is at least the looming possibility and hope for not reality, that there might be tall towers elsewhere against our will. So that's why that's on the agenda.
And this would prohibit any, if there was an application filed, if we pass this moratorium, it would prohibit that until the moratorium was lifted or the so-called referendum is taken.
But I just don't want anybody to get confused. It's not about the DOT towers.
Not about, we can't have, we don't.
The DOT towers are not cell towers. I mean, it's a concern.
This is for cell towers only.
Right. But you did just give me a reason to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
That was our goal, right?
Thank you.
We get lonely.
Thank you all.
And I did pull up the Newcastle agenda, just, and it's not specifically on there, but as the young lady mentioned, there's a public comment period, and also the town administrators' report. I don't know if they'll include it in that, but it's not specifically listed on the agenda, just so you know.
Can I come up here? I'm Robin Murphy. I live in Chappaqua, which is in the town of Newcastle, and I really encourage as many people to come tomorrow to Newcastle. It's important that we have not mobilized in Newcastle the way you guys have in Pleasantville and Mount Pleasant, and it's really, really impressive. Last week was a vacation week, maybe that's why not as many people know about it, but the voice is important as a community, and it's not just by the town, it's the, the community is bigger than just the town. So I hope to see a lot of you tomorrow.
Thank you. I really do appreciate the visits from people from our adjacent communities. We don't get too many of them, but this is clearly a regional issue, so thanks for your visit.
Hi. I'm Vincent Laduka. I'm at 52 Depew Street, about, my office is about a tower's length from that tower. My main question or concern is that, you know, communications between the communities, is there like a master list of, you know, emails that people are getting information?
Yes. I mean, while you talk to Deana privately, you know, that's a citizen venture. Certainly, all of the contact information for each level of elected official is available on the relevant websites, but I do think that Deana can put you in contact with everything you need in one place.
I am a resident of Chappaqua, and I do know a number of people there that would probably love to know what's going on and, you know, be a part of it.
If anybody's interested, we have flyers and petitions to sign, so I can certainly give you a flyer. As a Yahoo group, which I keep up to date and everything.
All right, so I encourage you, I thank you all for that. I encourage that work to go on as it will go on. We have various other things to do. Another comment.
How you doing tonight? Nickeluzi, 30 Spring Street. Born, raised here in Pleasantville all my life, 45 years. Just one thing I want to get across is to the people, they have to understand that this is not, they're not cell towers. People think they're going to get better reception. They have to understand that this is not for cell tower use. That's my point. Thank you.
Definitely. All right, anybody else on that subject?
Henry Laba, 385 Bedford Road. It's great that we're having legislative action to slow it or stop what's taking place, but just curious if, from the legal perspective, if the village is, you know, subcouncil and what rights we have to.
We certainly have discussed it with council. I think it's fair to say that each level of government is beholden to the level above it, and I think we have relatively little leverage, maybe almost no leverage legally, unless, as was suggested by one of the speakers, Jim Cagiano, I guess, there could be identified a flaw in the process that DOT went through fulfilling their requirements, but they're not subject to local zoning, they're not subject to local approvals pending the legislation that Assemblyman Castelli described, and they are, to a very large extent, free to do what they wish to do on their own land. So that said, they clearly are part of a political environment and very much subject to, and sensitive to, the political winds, and so certainly, a show of force is influential.
And legally, for private citizens that are affected, I just know stories in the cities when they build towers and affect someone's view, that sort of thing.
I mean, I can't speak to that. I don't know. Certainly, the assertion that has been made by DOT about the microwave transmitters is that they meet all the requirements of the FCC, and I'm guessing that, assuming that is true, that that probably provides, it rings all the bells DOT is required to ring. You know, if it came to the point of blocking someone's view or harming someone's property value, I don't know what sort of legal standing somebody would have. I mean, God knows, nobody's hoping to turn this into a matter for litigation. Who knows what might happen down the road?
I think it met its federal environmental review. The FIPA?
NIPA.
NIPA?
So, I mean, the review process is different than it would be for a private developer who wanted to build a cell tower, for example, different in almost every respect. So at any rate, you know, certainly, we're cognizant of that issue. I don't think, here's hoping that that never turns into a reality, but by the same token, I think the next step here, obviously, is to see what we get back from DOT and see what attitude they take, and hopefully, we'll find that they have modified the plan or decided to cancel a piece of it that's affecting us, so.
Right.
Stay tuned. All right, thanks, Henry. All right. I think we probably have, did we have, anybody else want to say something? Okay, then we're going to move on to other, a good bit less exciting things. Assemblyman Castelli, thank you again for coming. Assemblyman Katz, thank you for coming.
Do you want a break? Take a break.
Okay, we're going to take a brief television break so that Shane can change the tape. We'll be back very shortly. Welcome back to the Village Board meeting for Pleasantville. Today's Monday, February 27. We had a brief break there while a large group that was here about the DOT tower issue left, and we switched tapes and the cameras, so welcome back. I had a couple of announcements to make. The first is that last night was a proud night for the village of Pleasantville when Terry George, who is a Pleasantville resident, and his daughter, Orla, who I think went to Pleasantville High School, certainly their son, Seamus George, is a Pleasantville High School graduate of a few years ago, marched up in the, I guess, still-named Kodak Theater to pick up an Oscar for the best live-action short movie that they shot that's called The Shore, and it was actually shot in Ireland at the family's cottage. And Terry George is a distinguished figure who was, has also been nominated twice before for a screenplay for Hotel Rwanda.
Hotel Rwanda was a huge.
And for The Name of the Father. But last night, Pleasantville, New York, was represented at the podium, holding one of those Oscars, so a very proud night for the George family. Congratulations to them, and by extension, we bask in their reflected glory, so happy night that was. Two other things to report. One is, we received the letter that we have received for some years writing from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, congratulating us on being recognized again as a Tree City USA, and that reflects the efforts we have made and also reflects the fact that we're running as fast as we can to keep up with the damage wrought by the twin threat of Mother Nature and Con Edison, as we try to keep this Tree City USA. It's been heavy lifting lately, but the village has planted several hundred trees over the last 10 years, and some of them are now starting to achieve some significant height and.
I wonder if they gave us the award before we have all the stumps hanging around in On Wheeler Avenue after the last storm.
You're awarded a.
That's why we smell so good, you see, because we're the, you know, it was the combination of those scents.
Exactly. It's the smell of silvestre, I'm afraid, as Con Ed countries. I also want to report that we received the notice of an annual event that is run by the student body at Pace University at their Pleasantville campus and the American Cancer Society, which is the annual Relay for Life. That will take place starting Friday night, April 20, in the Goldstein Fitness Center, and it runs from 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM all through the night through Saturday, April 21. Pace invites cancer survivors, their families, friends, and the public to join in the effort to raise money for cancer research. You can find out more about the Relay for Life that is run at Pace at www-relayforlife.org/paceuniversity. I was there last year and will go again this year. An inspiring event and one of those moments when several different communities that frequently don't intersect all that much have a very good reason to come together and to do good work, so.
It really is wonderful, if you've ever been to one of these, it's a national organization that runs these events all over, especially on college campuses, and, you know, they stay up all night in different sororities and different fraternities and different groups, walk a segment at a time, and then they lay back down in their areas. and they get up again and they walk, and it's really a wonderful, wonderful thing, if, I'm sure they're accepting, if you want to, as a group...
Be a sponsor and bring groups in.
Be a sponsor, and you could do that, and it's, it's a great thing for, you know, high school varsity teams even could go over there as a group and, and do this, it's a great thing for them to do for the team, a lot of the varsity teams do do programs where they, a community service program for their team, and this would be a great one to do for a varsity team or a junior varsity team.
So again, that's relayforlife.org/paceuniversity, and our own Pleasantville Lions Club is very much involved in sponsoring a dinner that, that night for cancer survivors, and it's, it's just a great event for a very good cause. We, a couple of other things to report, one of them, I mentioned last time, that the, purchase of the MLA property by the Henkel Knife Company continues to move along, Henkel has met, their first meeting with the Planning Commission, and I believe was referred out to the zoning board for their review, so that work is ongoing, and we are optimistic that their project will go through the review process and be approved, and that the, that the property can close, and we'll see some life coming back to a long dormant location. I promised our friends on the Recycling Committee that I would regularly remind all of you to get the to Pleasantvillerecycles.org, which is a great website and one that I myself went to this week, because of the how to recycle A to Z, when you end up with an oddball item you're trying to get rid of in a sustainable and sane way, turns out that Pleasantvillerecycles.org is a destination to find out, so, they'll be periodically shooting us a hint of the week or the month, and we'll pass it on.
So can you recycle your foam mushroom holder?
Styrofoam, it turns out you can't recycle at the moment, despite the fact that sometimes...
Not styrofoam, but those other foamy things you can.
Yeah, that remains still in question, there are some gray areas to this, my advice is stockpile it until you can determine.
It's not referred to as other foamy thing?
Yeah.
O?
Under O.
Other foamy thing?
A to Z, other foamy things. And then, lastly, before we go to our resolutions, I also wanted to mention that we met earlier in our work session with our Village Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, now led by Mike Gilfeather, along with Linda Balafoto, our Park Superintendent, I'm sorry, our Rec. Superintendent, and one of the subjects of discussion was the, the capital, a capital plan for the Pleasantville pool, there are various issues that we need to confront, including some filter room issues that we are going to have to spend some money on soon, we have a rather detailed report from our pool consultants about the issues that affect the pool both in the present and are likely to affect the pool over the next five to 10 years, as well as concerns and questions about what to do about the state of the pool house, in particular, the, certainly the bathrooms and shower room area are long past their prime, so, we are continuing to work with PRAB and are going to be scheduling a work session with them, not only about that, but to put that project in the sort of context of a whole bunch of other issues that are on the radar screen for our parks and rec infrastructure, and work forward with the sort of twin opportunity and threat of the fact that at the moment bonding rates are at historic lows, at the same time as it is extremely difficult to make the decision to spend any more money, both in the current environment and in the context of the 2% tax gap, so, as that progress, project makes its way further towards establishing some priorities, there'll be certainly opportunities to let the public know what's going on and to get everybody else's input, so, anybody else have anything to add to the list?
I would, yes, Peter, as you know, I met with the Chamber of Commerce last week, they had a concern about the multiplying of individual businesses with the same business popping up, multiple yogurt places, multiple hair and nail salons, multiple eateries preferring the same type of food, and they were looking for some advice on how that might be controlled. I really think that that's an issue largely that's within the control of the property owners rather than local legislation, and we discussed a bit some of the things that we might be able to do with local legislation, in particular, repeating the kind of legislation we have for separation distances between bellicatessence, but we know that, that there have been variances to that regulation, and some of the businesses which have been very successful here in the Central Business District have been the beneficiaries of variances to that. We also discussed the tower issue at some length, and I think the chamber was interested in getting an update on the tower issues, they weren't as familiar and had not been in attendance to all the meetings and input that we've had here at this board. And secondly, the following night, I was at the Planning Board meeting, as they were looking at a recommendation back to this board on the affordable housing legislation that we referred to them, the AAFH, Affirmable Affordable...
The Model Ordinance.
It's a mouthful. At any rate, we had incorporated some of the suggestions that they had made in the previous review, and we discussed that, and we also discussed what the timeline, what the schedule was for having that on their agenda for referral back to this board, and we're waiting still, we have a comment back from the county on our revised affordable housing ordinance before deciding how to proceed with regard to instituting that into law, or to have a vote on whether that would be instituted into law.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll go to our resolutions, number 29, Steve.
Resolve the pre-check register dated February 27, 2012, covering check numbers 71597 and 71689, wire transfers, and 71598 through 71688 and 71690 have been reviewed and are hereby approved, as listed below. General Fund, $181,292.05, the Water Fund, $123,646.047, the Capital Fund, $65,108, the Refuge Fund, $15,040.80, the Pool Fund, $661.37, for a total of $385,748.69.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just worth mentioning, one of the items here is a progress payment for the Bedford Road Water Main Replacement Project, which is...
That was my question.
...a Water Main Project that is rerouting the flow of water that comes down Church Street, this is drinking water, up Green Meadow, down Hayes Hill, and back to the old village next to Amangiori. The purpose of that is both to improve the dynamics of the flow of water, but also to allow us to abandon in place the last very old section of Water Main in the village, and so, that will complete the project of the renewal, which has, I guess, been roughly 20-year project, fair to say, something like that, of renewing the entire Water Main system in the village of Pleasantville, and happy news to be at the end of that, we know it was a disruptive process for the people who live in that area and for the businesses that are in that area, there is currently temporary blacktop in place because there is another phase of that project along Green Meadow that will involve some stormwater improvements at Green Meadow and coming down Hayes Hill, that will happen in the spring, and the other areas of temporary pavement get replaced with permanent pavement when spring comes, and that can be done, so, that's an aside on the matter of the check register. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, January 13, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me mention that Resolution Number 18, recorded in these minutes, was the hiring of election inspectors, and it reminds me to remind you that the village election will take place on March 20, and there are three seats, the mayor and two trustees, up for election on Tuesday, March 20. Number 31.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations, Pace University Club, $449.76 for the planting of mums, and the Lions Club, $500 for the annual egg hunt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments?
Egg hunt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much to Pace for the contribution of the flowers, and to the Lions Club for funding the annual egg hunt. Number 32, Brian.
The, tell me about Pace giving us 150 bucks, that's great.
I don't know if there's a, there's a student initiative, Judy, do you know? Let's find out where it came from. It's a strange amount of money, maybe they put some...
Is it the same group that worked with beautification on planting?
Yes, it was, it was for Kathy Dinkle.
Yeah.
She must have given a bill for the mums and they reimbursed us.
Well, much appreciated.
It's very nice.
Okay, Brian, number 32.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an easement agreement with Sorb Cove Realty Corp. for the purpose of installing a landscape network zone property located at 9 Marble Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this, this is the Mavis Tire site?
I do, yeah, this had gone before a Planning Commission, and as part of their site plan review, they were compelled by the Planning Commission to do some planting in the public right-of-way, it's a pretty common approach to creating a buffer and some green space in some of these areas where there isn't really a significant amount of property available, and we've allowed this in other places along the corridor, so, what, what the Planning Commission has recommended and what they're petitioning for tonight is basically a right-of-way agreement, so they can do some plantings and provide, you know, at least some, some screening between the sidewalk and the property.
It's similar to what we did over at Carquest.
Carquest looked fantastic, doesn't it?
Looks beautiful, yeah.
They did a great job, yeah, this is similar, it's not, it won't be as high, and the plantings will be lower because of the, of the intersection there, but it'll create a buffer too between the two-time property and the Mavis property, so it'll...
We've done it at the American Gas Station here in the village, right down at the corner.
Yeah, that looks really good, too.
And also at the larger, the two gas stations down the old village, so it's been a fairly, and also on the, the new service station on Marble Avenue.
Yeah, it makes a big difference, and it does, and it helps, you know, create at least some more pervious surface, so, it's nice.
Well, and I held up the drawing, and I think Shane was able to capture it on camera, so you got a chance to see it at home, but thanks to Mavis, and thanks to our citizen members of the Planning Commission for working on this project, that out of something unfortunate, the major fire at Mavis, in the end, the village will end up with a much better-looking facility and a much better screening of the parking, and hopefully Mavis ends up with a building that will serve their retail needs well and keep them as an anchor retailer in the village of Pleasantville for a long time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 33.
I think that's aye. Resolve that Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement with Westchester County for the use of scanner voting machines, subject to advice of council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Judy, maybe you could touch on this, we're using the new scanning voting machines, same as people are used to in November?
Yes, we're using the new scanners as opposed to the old lever machines, because the scanners are much better, they're much more accurate.
We used them in the last village election as well.
We used them in the last election.
Right.
But we're having more of them this year, right?
And we don't own them, so we need to use the county.
Oh, are we having, we only had, we had one in a backup last time.
No, we only had one, and...
You didn't have the backup?
No, we only had the one, unless the, the county has been pressuring, we may have to take the Plan B machine, but...
They charge for that?
Well, they won't charge it, but it's just another cost to, you know, to have it moved here.
Right, so, okay, the way of the world.
I would take the Plan B machine, I'm not kidding.
Is that electronic or is that the old style?
It's, or hand, it's hand-cabbed accessibility.
I think we should have it.
And it usually, it's, it's, it's very good, when they had the county elections, there was a lot of problems with some of the machines in some of the districts, and...
Yeah, we were fine last year, and we had a pretty heavy election.
Yeah, we, we did.
It's, the additional cost is about 350, it's another machine to move.
Hmm, okay.
All right, well, we'll leave that in your hands to determine what we ought to do.
You're it, Judy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, again, Tuesday, March 20 is the day of the village election. Number 34, Mindy.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments to fund over-budgeted accounts, $3,784 from contingency to the water administration engineering, $790 from contingency to the refuge judgments and claims, to total $4,574.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, these are the accounting cleanups that we make, in this case, switching from contingency to accounts that were underfunded, again, it doesn't change the overall budget, we have a budget line in the approved budget for contingency that buffers these kinds of modest changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, number 35. Jonathan, naturally.
Oh, how could that be? I'm sorry.
Jonathan always gets the long ones, this one only goes on.
No, I always get the long ones.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, March 12, 2012, 8:00 PM prevailing time at 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to hear, excuse me, comments as it pertains to the amending Chapter 185 zoning article 7A entitled Wireless Telecommunication Services Facilities, Sections 185-35.1, entitled Regulation of Wireless Telecommunication Services Facilities, to add the following, Section 1, the amended Chapter 185 zoning article as described above, Article 7A, and we're adding a moratorium on applications, effective dates to be determined.
We need to establish those dates, and our original intention had been a six-month moratorium?
Yeah, I would actually, you know, it's going to take a little time, you know, and I know every time we do a six-month, we always end up going through another six.
Want to do one year?
Let's do a 12-month from the effective date of adoption, so you don't have to worry about doing it in six months.
Okay, effective from date of adoption...
Right.
For 12 consecutive months, is, can we read it that way? Is that acceptable, Jonathan?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Okay, go ahead.
And further, subject to the six pages of additional text contained here in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as, as you may have heard if you were here and listening to the discussion we had earlier in the evening, our zoning that affects cell towers and telecommunications service facilities is, I think, 10 or more years old, and was the result of a serious and a careful effort at the time to understand the village's rights and responsibilities within the context of federal communication law, and as we have approached the discussion of the towers that DOT proposes to build on the sawmill, and which we are vigorously opposing and are hopeful will not be built, it also gave rise to a discussion within the board about whether our telecommunications zoning was still current, still appropriate, and whether it would warrant any changes, so for that reason, we have proposed this moratorium on applications, as Jonathan indicated in the resolution, and that would give the village the opportunity to review its, its zoning, and it's a bit of a complicated venture, because it's not just what we want to do, it's what we're allowed to do in the context of the FCC rulings, so, that's what we're up to, and that's what we propose to establish a public hearing on tonight that will be held on Monday, March 12.
At 8:00 PM, so, make sure that, I think that's, kind of gets lost in the, all the verbiage here, but there is a public hearing set for Monday, March 12 at 8:00 PM.
Two weeks from tonight.
Anything to add to that, Patty?
Yeah, let me just... Yeah, this is an amendment to Chapter 185, it actually has to go to the Planning Commission first, it's a zoning amendment.
So it has to go to planning before we have a public hearing?
Right.
And probably we need, so we need a longer notice.
I thought, I didn't think of the standard of legislation.
Zoning meets win again?
Uh, they're...
Well, no, planning, it's planning, not zoning, I mean, we certainly would solicit the input of the, of the zoning board on this, but, but the referral requirement is to planning.
Right.
Before we set the public hearing for a moratorium, it has to go to them first?
I mean, this is a moratorium.
Before a public hearing, it's a moratorium, it's, yeah.
I'm sure we've done that in the past.
We did it when we, we had a moratorium on corner... We did it when we had a moratorium on corner building.
I would keep, you know what, let me disc a legal opinion. I would keep your hearing date set. We can always postpone the hearing. We'll find out this week from Joel.
So, we'll leave the resolution as it currently stands for our public hearing.
It's an interesting question because it is an amendment to the zoning text, but it's only temporary.
Well, remember the canopy?
Yeah, it's temporary.
I don't think we ran that by...
But we're not changing the text, that's why. It's just we're just putting a moratorium on it to consider changing it.
I think we may be okay.
So, I think we're okay.
Certainly, yes. We'll leave it this way, pending, pending review by council, and if we change course...
Yeah, the nine times that we extended the moratorium on Marble Avenue.
Right, remember that? If this came out, I know this is true.
I don't think we said to do it.
I wouldn't, I don't think we're...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've made it to the end of our resolutions, and let me remind people several dates coming up, one of which is Tuesday, March 20, which is the village election, and then, I think I mentioned, but will mention again, the dates for Pleasantville Day, which is Saturday, May 12 is Pleasantville Day in the village of Pleasantville, and then fast forward a couple of months to Saturday, July 14, which is the Pleasantville Music Festival. So, Monday, March, Tuesday, March 20 for the election is the first date coming up, and one to note on your calendar, that election will take place here in this room, second floor of Village Hall.
7:00 to 9:00.
7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. All right, any further business, comments, questions?
I thought there was something before the Pleasantville Day, the night before, wasn't there something?
The 19th?
Yeah.
This is his retirement party.
Oh, before election, he was saying.
No, 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 before Pleasantville Day, we had...
Oh, Pleasantville, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Yeah, I remember now.
All right.
It's a fundraiser for PCTV. See, I, tell Marlene, I remembered.
All right, make the pitch.
I put it down. She doesn't have details yet.
All right.
It's the PCTV fundraiser dinner.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you for watching. We've taken an hour and a half of your evening. We will be back at a work session here Monday, March 5, and our next regular meeting Monday, March 12 at 8:00. Thanks very much.
Thank you.